For a change to the proposed consent agenda.
Here now, Mr. Chair, I move to approve this consent agenda for today's meeting.
Have a motion, do I have a second? Have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda for today's meeting and further discussion. Here are none. Those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nay. And one nay. Four ayes, one nay. Okay? We have no one for public comments. Mr. County Manager, you're up.
Thank you. Thank you. My first item for business this morning is acceptance of additional funding for our Creek snagging project. If you recall, funds were awarded previously and work had been completed. Green Construction had actually left their platform in the water in hopes and anticipation of additional funding. Additional funding was received. It is in the amount of one hundred and eight thousand, one hundred and thirty-eight dollars. We've notified them and they have agreed to perform the additional work up to the additional amount funded at the same cost. I believe that will be an additional four point one three miles. In an effort to expedite the process, we signed for the funds. This is for formal approval so that we can try and get this completed before calendar turn.
Move to approve this additional funding for Creek snagging, Mr. Chair.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second and further discussion.
I just want to make a short comment. I'm not entirely certain, but based on my knowledge, we have been fortunate to receive grants for assistance for snagging creeks each and every year. I realize that efforts to soil and water conservation district staff often go unnoticed and unappreciated. So I want to seize this valuable opportunity to express my appreciation for the work and also to the Soil and Water Conservation Chip Advisor.
Thanks, sir.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you.
Chair, how far is this going to take us?
Sir?
How far is this going to take us? What?
Four miles. It's going to go from Snow Hill down toward Hookah. That ride, four miles. These things bend and twist so many different ways.
It's Toll Hill Farms.
That's it.
Okay. I think that's the farm that used to be Jack Carroll's farm.
Okay, aye, that's right.
You get to Toll Hill by that farm?
Yeah, he did.
Yeah. That's what you're talking about. Right near Charlie Hollman's.
Right, okay.
Any further discussion? Here are none. Those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. The ayes have the motions carried unanimously.
Thank you. Our next item for business this morning is a requested tax amendment from the Green County Public Housing Agency in their bylaws. Initially, they had sent just Article Three. Wasn't enough information for staff, so we asked for them to provide a little bit more explanation. So they sent bylaws with some more detail on what they were after. And it really is simplistic that the public housing agency is asking that we amend Article Three and change it from having three one-year appointments and two two-year appointments to having three three-year appointments and two five-year appointments. Nothing else changes, and I think it's just for continuity of operation and service.
These appointments, are these ones that are on the board?
Yes, they're appointed by you all. And if they're not reappointed, then they serve in two-year terms after their initial appointment ends, so.
Are they going to ask what the purpose of this was, for these?
I think it was for continuity of service, but if they're just... I see exactly what you're saying, sir.
Nothing's changed with me. My laws are whatever. I move to accept this text amendment. Mr. Chair.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
I got some comments. In the cover sheet prepared by the county manager, it stated that a request has been received from Ms. Carolyn Moore for change appointment from three to five years. However, Ms. Moore emailed to Ms. Moore and she stated, "The board of directors asked me to find out Article One intention to be changed to three and five years appointed by the county commissioner." "A follow-up review and audit in incorporation is mission. Three of the five designated by the commissioner shall be appointed for a term of one year. Two of the five designated by the commissioner shall be appointed for a term of two years. As the term of such to rest is expired, the successor shall be appointed for two terms until it's settled or that has qualified." Am I speaking in...
Yes.
Yeah. You're doing good. It should be noted that when we implemented the new board appointment policy, the terms were already changed. And we are currently granting three, three-year term. It's unclear to me if this board is aware of this change, but it seems that their needs have already been met when we changed the board appointment policy. Under the same policy, there is provision stating, "In order to allow more individuals the opportunity to serve on Green County Board's committee, the county commissioners established a limit on the time that individuals can serve and thus specified by a state or regional board for request to reappointment." As per this provision, the term limit is set at three full terms with each term lasting three years. It's important to note that filling an inspired term or probationary term does not count toward a term limit. In my opinion, serving on a board for five years is lengthy duration, especially considering that under the new board appointment policy, they are eligible for three terms. I see no reason to make exception for this particular board while adhering to a different policy for other boards. If they are unable to find a suitable candidate to fill a vacancy after three full terms, the board of commissioners can report to whoever they deem fit. However, we must strive for consistency in policy policies we have already approved with the system three terms of three years. As previously mentioned, I'm uncertain whether the housing authority is aware of the changes that have already been implemented. Therefore, I would recommend verifying the awareness of the modifications that we have already made before we proceed with our vote. If we analyze the details, the existing property provides greater advantages to them than compared to the one they're proposing. So like I said, I prefer that we make sure they're aware of our already changes. And if there's still a bit of changing, we can come back in this meeting.
Mr. Chair, I move to adjutant this to the next meeting. I need a second.
Second. Have a motion and a second to table this to the next meeting.
Because they have to return to three years. And that's nine years, and that person, that's eight. You'll be old when...
Any further discussion on the motions to table? Here are none. Those in favor of tabling to the next meeting signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have the motions carried.
Thank you. Next item for business this morning is the request for position classification amendment. Currently, we have administrative assistant ones. And after examination of some of the job descriptions and duties being performed by some of the administrative assistant ones, the need to define administrative assistant two and three was made. Now, we don't need the administrative assistant two at this time, so the request is for an administrative assistant three to be added to the position classification plan for someone to fill. Are there questions? It's just not a position that's been defined and active, so before we can put someone in it, I need your approval that we can't have this position.
We've got one and two now.
We've got one. We do not have two.
Two.
But we've defined what two may be, but we don't have anyone to go into two, so it's unneeded.
So we're just going to jump from one to three?
That's right. And we've got the position grades established for when the two is needed, where I'll ask you to put it. I believe that a one is a sixty-three, a two is a sixty-five, and a three is a sixty-seven. I'm only asking for what I need.
Move to approve, Mr. Chair.
Have a motion to approve. Do I have a second? Second. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Can I go over again while you say you're going to skip?
We currently don't have an individual who we deem as doing the extra duties that we have determined justify the administrative assistant two position, but rather the administrative assistant three position. So if I don't need the administrative assistant two, I'm not going to ask you to amend the position classification plan to include it. I'll wait until I need that position and ask at that time. It's the concept of only asking for what I need.
How many things are there?
It's one or two, and they're both in the health department, I believe.
Do I have any more discussion? Here are none. I will call for questions. Those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. The ayes have the motions carried unanimously.
Thank you. My next item is a request for appointment for the register of deeds. With Ms. Nancy Murphy's recent announcement of retirement effective June thirtieth at midnight, the need for an appointment of a register is needed for July one at midnight. And Ms. Murphy requested, and the executive committee for the Democratic Party concurred that Assistant Register of Deeds, Ms. Bridget Sasser, is the candidate that they agree on. Ms. Sasser has received bond, hold it in hand, or proof that it is going to be available for her July one. Are there questions? If not, I would ask for the appointment of Ms. Bridget Sasser as our register of deeds effective midnight, July one.
Move to approve, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Here are none. Those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. The ayes have the motions carried.
To note, should be sworn in, is it July third?
July third.
July third should be sworn in by?
Holly Little, clerk of court.
Ms. Holly Little.
What's that?
At?
Is that a time just?
A time to be determined.
And if we could have a motion regarding the bond, excepting?
Oh, thank you. Requesting a motion to accept the bond from Ms. Bridget Sasser as register of deeds.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to accept the bond. Any further discussion? Here are none. Those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have the motions carried.
Thank you. Our last item for action today is our fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three budget amendment. Recall that the new finance budget amendment is to bring any department or fund that is not in compliance, back in compliance with general statutes. We believe that what has been presented will do so. And if there are no questions, I would ask for a motion to approve the amendment as presented.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Here are none. Those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. The ayes have the motions carried unanimously.
Thank you, sir.
I'm going to go back and read this, what you just said about Ms. Sasser becoming our new register of deeds at what time?
A time to be determined.
No, 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 no. I mean, she starts when?
Twelve o'clock July one.
So. The bond takes effect four days.
Twelve oh one.
Twelve oh one.
I would say twelve oh one because midnight July one would be twenty-four hours into the first day of July. And that's the reason why, legally, in my opinion, it should be triple oh one on July first.
No.
Not midnight July first. That's just my opinion.
I understand.
And I want to kind of clarify that the attorney can keep me straight. Thank you. Madam Attorney, do you have any comments at this time?
No, I do not.
Commissioner reports and recommendations?
I got one.
Okay.
I would stand my woman's congratulations to all the Green County, all the team participating in various tournaments. The particular work note. Particularly note that the team under grow, the team currently competing for the state championship at this stunning Green County Recreation Complex. So if you have any break timers, I mean, be sure to come stop by and support them.
I can hear myself talking.
Absolutely, absolutely. Any other Commissioner comments, recommendations, other than just a reminder that we do not meet on the third of July? The schedule was set back at the end of last year, actually, the December meeting, I think.
Yes.
But just a reminder.
Is it maybe night two?
Yes. I believe.
No, no, seventeen.
Seventeen.
Seventeen, seventeen, seventeenth at seven o'clock. Well, if the third's on Monday, you have fourteen days, pretty come close to seventeen.
Got me again.
There you go, bro.
You don't know about his new math.
I tell you, walk the truth. I'm not... My new math doesn't work sometimes.
June was night taking us on the moon.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Sorry. All that having been said, we have these more Commissioner reports and recommendations.
Congratulations, Ms. Sasser.
Congratulations, yes, yes. Do I have a motion in the beginning of closed session for the purpose of attorney-client privilege?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Have a motion, do I have a second? Any further discussion? Here are none. Those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. The ayes have the motions carried.